But the slides are there really to take you through step by step how to get access to the contract documents. I'm obviously aware some of you even by now will have already registered an interest. So you may already have got into a certain stage, but I'm just going to log in. There's a link here at the top for register. So if you haven't started with Public Contract Scotland, this is the link up here. It's very basic, so there's nothing at all. You just sort of go through the various questionnaires. I kind of equate it to registering for online shopping or something like that. So you'll get the login done. Come into here. I'm just going to put in my details here for PCS. And if you're looking to find the contract notice and all the tender sort of references, the easiest way to do is search for buyer. So search for buyer. I'm just going to put Aberdeen here initially. It's going to bring up a few things. And luckily Aberdeen City Council, who are the lead procurement body for this one. Click on that. And this is what they call the buyer profile. So this gives you all the current contracts, for example, past contracts and so on. So this link here is the current contracts. And at the top here is the dynamic purchasing, which is the one that we're looking for. So I'm going to click on that. So at this stage, we're still in what they call Public Contract Scotland. And PCS, Public Contract Scotland, is the area where all opportunities are advertised. But to some extent PCS also is an area where you can submit tenders. And the format for this particular tender is a bit unusual in that you can find the opportunity on PCS. You then have to go to PCS tender to complete the stage one process, the dynamic purchasing system, and will then come back to PCS for anything to do with the follow-up activities. So if you bear with me, we're going to kind of switch a little bit between the two and just show you how these work. And so if you go onto PCS, you find the notice, and this is the notice here. There's, just move down a little bit. There's a full notice text, and that gives you all, this is just in to the introduction, which gives us the deadline, very important by the way, 5th of December, 12 noon. The full notice gives you a bit more detail and tells you that it's Aberdeen City, Aberdeen Shire, Aberdeen Shire Council. So it's a kind of joint procurement, if you like, and it tells you here all the different lots. So I'm not going to go through that in great detail just now. But if you were looking at it thinking, well, I bid or will I not? This is already in the full notice context where you might have to look at that and have a decision whether you want to do that. And this blue box tells you that all the documents, all the questionnaires that you need to fill in, anything at all about submitting your tender, isn't going to be done on this Public Contract Scotland platform. It's actually going to move you to something called PCS tender. And there's a little link here, but you need to be careful and make a note of this, what they call the project code 22768, because we're going to use that once we move to PCS tender to find the documents that we're looking for. So I'm going to click on this just now. Hopefully you can still see that, I think, Fran. And I'm going to log in, but if you haven't registered, you will need to register separately. And there's a little link down here, very straightforward. So again, you just need to go through that, you get your password and so on, and then you're ready to log in. So I'm just going to do that just now as me. Now, unusually, this particular opportunity is a dynamic purchasing system. So in terms of procurement, there's a little bit of a distinction when they talk about the different projects. And invitation to tenders tends to be things where you have to put in all your pricing, a technical proposal, whatever. And the dynamic purchasing system lives in this area here. They're using quite old terminology, PQQ, and that stands for pre-qualification questionnaire. But all it means is this is a system where you're bidding to be part of something. You're not putting in any pricing at this stage, but you're kind of joining, I'm hesitating to use the word framework, but you're joining a list, like an approved list of organisations that then will be approached for any further work that Aberdeen City, Shire and Highland Council might have in relation to employability. So when you get to this stage, once you've logged in, you click on PQQs, and it brings you into this PQQs, open to all suppliers area. And at this point, you need to put in your code for, you can either trawl through all the different areas, but ideally put in your code for the actual tender itself. And that's going to help you filter through. So I'm just already realising, I've probably forgotten to take a note of that. So let me just have another relook, 22768. So there's a little filter box. You want to filter by project code. Click on contains and 22768. Hopefully I've remembered that okay. Now, in my system, that's showing no PQQs to display, but that only means I've actually already registered for that. But in your case, it's going to show up here with a link. You'll click on that, and then it's going to transfer to this area here, my PQQs. And again, unfortunately, my PQQs is full of quite a lot of different things, because we're bidding for lots of different contracts. I'm just going to go down here and see if I can pick this up. So here we are, it's 22768, Dynamic Purchasing System for the Provision of Employability Services, still running, response to be submitted, and there's the deadline, the 5th of December. And this is a live link here, so I'm just going to click on that. And at this point, normally you'll get, again, I've gone through the system already, you'll get a little link at the top, and you'll see this in the slides, asking you to express an interest. So you can click that, to be honest, and it was interesting, actually, we had a question on this yesterday, folks said, oh, you know, if you express an interest and you don't submit, is that like a black mark against you? Absolutely not. So it doesn't actually matter any tenders on these portals. You can click on it, express an interest, and just not go ahead with it at all, but just have a look at the tender documents. But in your case, you will express an interest, and then that will open up the documents here. I think you can probably already see if you're, I don't know, if you're not submitting tenders frequently, some of these forms, some of these systems look absolutely horrific, I would say. And we probably share your opinion having, even though we are working with them day to day. So it takes a little while to get used to the way that they're set up, and the screens are quite busy. But for this particular dynamic purchasing system, the approach is actually very, very different to what you would normally see. So all you need to do is open up the PQQ notice. Under PQQ details, you've got settings. So if you clicked on that, it would give you the deadline, the deadline for questions, maybe who the contact is, da di da. This is hugely important, we're going to come back to that shortly, the buyer attachments. And that's a list of the questionnaires that you need to fill in, documents that you need to sign. My response is the area where you need to actually submit and upload your completed documents. And associated users, most of us could probably ignore that. That's weird if you want to manage lots of people logging in across a big organisation. So the main things, settings, I think okay is important, get the questions, but it's these two, attachments and my response that you need to look for. So in this summary page, it already gives you a direct access to the my response qualification part. In other tenders, just for your information, what you might see at this stage is a qualification part, a technical part, which is like, how are you going to deliver the project, and maybe some pricing. But because this is a dynamic purchasing system, all you're doing here is registering your credentials, so to speak. And then in stage two, and that's where, hopefully Fran, we might still be able to share the slides, there's a stage two where you will be asked for, to bid, if you like, for individual projects. So qualification response, I'm just going to go straight into this because, in fact, it's a very straightforward form. There's no questions per se. And what's been decided in this situation is you don't need to fill anything in on screen, so there's no questions in this top bit. But as you move further down, there's an area here for additional attachments. And I'm going to come back to this, but when we go to the buyer attachments, there's one or two documents that you're going to fill in, and then we're going to come back here and actually show how to attach them, and then submit them. And that's going to be your tender submitted. So what we've done, just to re-track a little bit, is we've come in, we've expressed an interest, said we're going to participate, and we've gone to the, in the summary area, just save and exit here. We've gone into qualification, we've not yet filled in anything. So at this point, we're going kind of back a stage, and we're going to look at this buyer attachments. And this is, if you're listening today and you say, right, what do I need to start with? Aside from registering, this is the main area that you need to be looking at, because the council have put forward, I think it's half a dozen different documents here. Each of these is a live link, so you can either click on each of them and save them and put them into your folder for your response, or there's a little button up here that you can mass download and put them into a zip file. But essentially, it does the same thing, puts them all into whatever folder you want. So I've had a look at these, and Aberdeen City Council Terms and Conditions, Employability Services, absolutely. So you need to read that through and make sure there's nothing to fill in, you don't need to submit that document, but you do need to read it and make sure that you're happy with the terms and conditions. If you're not, then we're going to come back shortly and tell you in this messages area where you can ask some questions and get that clarified. This second document is a declaration, so that is a document that needs to be downloaded and signed, so it's not a question type thing. It's more to do with your director or who the key person is in your organisation, signing that, scanning it, and then uploading it, and we'll show you how to do that. This number three one, I think, is the one that you need to start with. So before you look at any of the other ones, look at this ITT, which stands for Invitation to Tender, and it's talking all about stage one. But in actual fact, the document also covers the next stage. So once you get on to the list on the DPS, what happens next when you're going to be asked for quotes, to actually bid for contracts and pieces of work? So absolutely crucial, you read that before you look at anything else. Number four is very straightforward, so it's just a case of which lots. And if you've looked at the contract notice, you'll see there's nine lots, I think, if I remember. The first few are to do with the different stages of employability, and then there's a few lots to do with things like health and safety, very, I don't know, like kind of very topic specific. And then lot nine is one that everybody will be entered into, which is the, what if some new provision comes up? Can we rely on you to provide solutions, whatever? My understanding is that you might want to ask a question about this today, how that works, but innovation, you know, what could come up? So within the DPS, it means that you're able to bid for that in future months or years or whatever. So lot confirmation, tick the box, very easy. Non-disclosure is another one of these, sign and scan and send up. And this one here is actually, this SPD Scotland is the main document that you're going to need to fill in, which is going to make the difference between you getting in and not getting in to the dynamic purchasing system. So again, sorry Fran, just could do with my slides here, but I'll go through the document online as well and just see what we can pull up, just to show what's involved in that. Just make sure that this opens up still on the screen. Is that still visible for you?
Yes, it is.
It is, great, good. And so there's a certain amount of things to read in the background. There's a certain amount of things to sign off, just to say, yes, we comply. But this is the critical document in terms of what you're going to need to fill in for this dynamic purchasing system. It's a document that's based originally on European legislation, and Keely and Angela and the various procurement teams across Scotland have to kind of work their way around about this. It's been converted into a Scottish version of the European document, but some of it's a wee bit clunky, to say the least, in terms of what you'd fill in. So it's a Word document, so all you need to do is obviously read through, particularly the first parts are quite to do with explaining about the whole standard procurement document. It's, the basic point of this is to say, what sort of organisation are you? Do you have the credentials to do the sort of work that we're asking for? What's your experience? Who are you working with in terms of subcontractors? Are you legitimate? So there's a whole, goodness knows, several pages of what we'd call business probity questions. So I suppose my message would be, on the surface, this document looks absolutely horrendous, but to be honest, in reality, I think really everybody will be able to fill it in no problem at all. It's just that it's couched in standard documentation terms, which have kind of come from Europe. So I'm just going to even already skip quite a lot of the preamble stuff and just show you, and hopefully reassure you what needs to be done. So Aberdeen City Council filled in the first bit. Part two here is the bit concerning you, and it's a Word document. So literally, all you need to do is fill in the text here. So there's a few things maybe to watch out for, this national ID in the UK, that's your company's house number. If you're a sole trader, just put in not applicable if you don't have one. There's a Dun's number, which you can go online and put in your company's house registration, and it'll give you back a Dun's number. If anyone wants that, Fran, I can give maybe a note, just a one-page note on how to do that. It's not, it won't fail you if you leave it blank, doesn't matter, I have to say, because somebody else will do that for you. A lot of this is just name and address, parent company, some of it is, you know, like tick the box options, what size are you of organisation? So this initial, what would say part two, is pretty straightforward. There's an odd question here, 2A16, if you're UK, you have to say non-applicable. And then there's further questions down the line, which asks about form of participation. So are you participating with others? That tends to be if you're like a consortium, so most people I think would say no to that. But there is a question further down which asks if you're subcontracting any of your work. It also asks which lots you're bidding for, so obviously, I think there's nine here, so if you could fill in the ones applicable there. There's a quite strange thing here that asks about representation. I tend to fill it in, it says if applicable, but I would normally fill that in with, for me, it's my details, because I'm the director of my business. If you don't want to put your date of birth, I would say just leave that out, because it's not mandatory. It's quite personal information to put that in, otherwise you can put that in if you want. So that's representation. Reliance on the capacity of other entities, this is where it becomes slightly complicated. So if you couldn't deliver your courses without liaising with another organisation completely, as opposed to just bringing in trainers, you might have to declare at some point that you need someone to do that. Or if you need another company to team with you to get through the financial assessments, for example, is another area where people would say yes to that. But to be absolutely honest, most people would just say no to this reliance on other entities. But you might want to see further down that you rely on some subcontractors. And again, I think this is more an issue in terms of the description of a subcontractor. So we deal with quite a lot of associates who just work with us, so they're not subcontractors in the sense that we give them a work package and they work entirely independently of us. So here you might have to decide whether you want to say yes or no to that. I think at this point in the dynamic purchasing system, you can declare that, but you don't need to give any further information on the people other than maybe a list. Let me just see if that says, I think there might be somewhere further down where you can list your subcontractors. This part three, it looks pretty horrendous on paper, on a Word format, but it's very much business probity. And most of the questions here, although it's very legalistic looking, they're really looking for you to say no to most of the questions in terms of, particularly this one here, human trafficking, drugs trafficking, so on. So you say, no, I have not. And if you say no, you can literally avoid all the rest of the related questions. So this is 3A, all the way down, you don't need to say anything else. 3B, have you, this is, so this is a yes question, tax, social security, yes, I have, yes, I have. But if you say yes, again, you don't need to fill in the rest of the document. So you can see from the tenor of this, there's lots of questions, but depending on what you answer all the way through, most of it will be literally a yes or no submission. If there's any queries you have about this, please put your questions through ESEP on the messaging system, which I'll show you shortly. So this one goes on for quite some detail about all sorts of activities that we don't need to be involved in, obviously. There's some towards the bottom that are what they call discretionary. So it might be that somebody has had, I don't know, maybe particularly larger companies where there's been a health and safety notice issued, and you've been taken to, you know, health and safety executive, and da da da, it's become an official notice, you do have to declare it. It shouldn't stop your bidding, you just have to say, yes, this happened, or it was a tribunal, or something like that. And this, what you call the self-cleansing measures, details here, what did you do? And then the buyer will decide if that's acceptable and you can go through. I think, to be absolutely honest, for most of us, going through these forms, most of the questions are generally no for these issues. So part three is that yes and no, what I would call the legal business probity. Part four, selection criteria, in this particular instance, there's nothing used in this section initially. There's a question about your insurance. We can just go down here, and again, this is the Word format, so you have to do the tick the box. So employers, and the contract notice will tell you, I think employers' liability, I can see from my notes, is five million. So you either say, yes, I already have it. If you don't have it, don't worry, you can still say no, but I commit to get it before the contracts are ordered, and that won't fail you in the submission. There's a funny question here that's all other types. So as it turns out in this procurement exercise, it's public liability is the only other type, and that's one million cover. So again, either you've got it or no, you commit. If you say no, I cannot commit, then you wouldn't get accepted basically on the DPS. So that's 4B5, insurance. 4B6 just lets you know that the organisation, the three, well, Aberdeen City is the lead potentially, is going to do a credit safe check, and that's on your financials. So you're either going to pass that or not, and if you're very high risk or high risk, it's not that you're going to fail automatically, but they will list that here, we may come back to find out if there's any issues in your financials. To be honest, I, if it's me bidding, I would do a credit safe check on myself and just find out what my rating is. And then you can safely say, even already in this text here, do the test, no problem at all, but we've, you know, we've already done it, it's fine. Or it doesn't look good here, some evidence to see what the problem is. And a problem could be something quite positive. We've got quite a few clients that we work with where they've invested maybe quite heavily one year in training or buying premises, you know, quite a bit of outlay, and suddenly their profit looks really not good. But they can explain that and say, well, we've done it, but it's for a positive reason. So do the credit safe check, I think is probably a good idea if you can. So 4B 6.1, they ask for this general documentation. To be honest, I tend to leave that blank unless there's literally a website that you can show people. That you can show people where your information is. But most of the information is quite eh, company specific. So it's not often that you've actually got a website that you can send people to. And the situation there is you just sell certify and say, yes, this is the deal. And then the next case is you'll get a eh, message through eh, PCS tender saying, we're considering you for award. Please send us evidence of your insurance eh, your staff numbers, your qualifications, all of that. So it could be that it's a kind of two-stage process. So we're still in this eh, qualifications area. They've done four B, which is the insurance and the financials. Four C is very important. Eh, so what you've got in the template here is a request for two relevant projects. And those two projects, which it says minimum two. So you're going to find at least two that are going to cover all the different lots that you're bidding for. So potentially you might find one project that covers all the different stages of the employability. And then others that are individual topics. Eh, you might want to present more than two. Eh, but you just need to know eh, that there's an appendix A that gives you a template on how to fill this in. So we'll see this as we move to the bottom. So the rest of four C. The next one is qualifications. So again, this is something you're going to have to work on and prepare, sorry, four C six. Eh, it says managerial staff here, and you need to just decide yourselves how you eh, translate that if you like. And to me, it's not just the managing director eh, the director, whatever. I think I'd be taking that right down to eh, senior tutor. Or, you know, people who are responsible for putting together the programmes, for monitoring the progress. Eh, and at this point you need to add in, and again, it's just a text box, there's no limit as far as I can see. Eh, but just add in the details of all your key staff that are going to deliver the lot that you're bidding for. Or the lots rather, that you're bidding for. There's a question about manpower. So again, year one, I would take us just now, twenty twenty-two. And then go back a couple of years and see what your numbers are. Doesn't divide it into managers or whatever, so just the total manpower. And then I think there's a question, actually, there's not a question about subcontracting. So that's the only one in four C eh, four D is not used. As I say, in, in the word format, it looks really complicated, but once you work through it eh, it's absolutely fine. You know, there's not so much to fill in eh, but it is essential to fill in this concluding statement. Eh, I think it does say somewhere further up here, if you're submitting it via PCS, then eh. You don't need to, you know, your, your signature, obviously you can put in an image of a signature at this point. And then the name, position, whatever. And if necessary, you might be asked for a kind of original signature at some point. Yeah, that might be a question, Keely by the way, to answer eh, later on from the council. And here's appendix A. So choose your lot, yes or no, will you bid? And then what's your provision that you're going to offer? And this is all pass or fail, I think, so it's not scored particularly. And then two relevant examples. And there's quite a detailed list here then of what you need to have for each. So you, I, I would recommend that you get started on these fairly quickly. Eh, and again, there's, doesn't look like there's any page limits. So you don't get a good account of the two examples that you've got that are going to cover the provision that you're looking for. Okay, so that's the, I just need sure that I'm still logged in on this one. That's your SPD document, which is downloadable. And this, if I go back to where we started, can you still see that Fran, okay?
Yes, we can.
That's fine. Eh, so all of that, the buyer attachments, terms and conditions, da, 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 da. Eh, lot confirmation is a tick box, but SPD, that's what we've just gone through just now. That's the very important one eh, that needs to be filled in. And once you've done that, if you click on my response. The qualification response, normally you'd expect to see all those questions laid out. But in fact, it's eh, quite straightforward here, so there's nothing to fill in apart from. You need to go down to the bottom and there's an eh, attachments area now. And I've just done one here just for my eh, test of the system. But if you add in view attachments. At this point, you'll fill in your certificates eh, and that SPD document. And load these up. So I'm just going to take out the test one that I've done, so it's blank at the moment. So if you come in, you have to say upload new file. And then select file, and it's going to take you into your eh, main, whatever, my documents. And this is where it's good to have a proper eh, upload. Like I've got one here, this is a good example where I've got a, a client and you think, well, it's the final file eh. I'll just, let me see, insurance for example. And you click and you open. It brings the file up and then you just confirm. And then save. And then underneath qualification, just go down and check then. So it's now got my, whatever my insurance policy is loaded up. So this is the bit to make sure you get absolutely right, is that anything that's asked for. And within the invitation to tender document, there's a checklist. Just make sure that you've absolutely uploaded all of these one by one eh, and you have to eh, save and exit. From that, and that will make sure they're all saved. And literally, once you've done that, you can actually then just submit your response. If you click submit, it gives you a wee chance to say please ensure. So I'm just going to say cancel at this point. Eh, the other point that is quite important, you can submit today, for example. Eh, but you can go right the way up to the deadline and keep resubmitting. If there's something you think of or you want to change. But eh, please don't leave it till like really last minute in case, you know, the system goes down or whatever. So in this particular situation eh, buyer attachments is your first port of call. Read everything, download everything, fill in the SPD, the lots eh, form, I think. And the ones that need to be signed. Go to my response eh, and attach all your documents. And in the meantime, the messaging system is the area where eh, you can actually either submit a question. Or you'll be keeping a track, you might get emails coming through of other people that have asked questions. And you'll get a heads up on that whenever they're answered. So you'll either come in through your email or you can just log in and check it. There's nothing so far, because I think it's just been published. So normally you might expect to see a few messages here. You can create a message and you just need to, there's a few little text boxes, what type of message is it? What's the subject? Fill in your message and then send. Just go back one level here. I think the system was built in the nineteen seventies by the way, folks, which is why it's such a horrible interface. So just cancel that. Eh, if you click on send messages, so there's nothing here. But normally when you send something, it's going to tell you, did the buyer read it already? Have they replied? So it's quite good. And you can draft messages and send them later. So there's, the portal doesn't look fantastic, but it's, it's reasonably okay. And as I say, because of the format eh, that it's a DPS at this stage. All you need to look at really is buyer attachments, my response, and then check on the messages as soon as you get the link. Eh, the, so that's stage one. If you eh, submit stage one and you're accepted onto the DPS. Eh, the council will not be using PCS tender to administer the next stage. They're going to go back and use the Public Contract Scotland area. And what will happen is eh, you'll be accepted. Say you're in lot one, whatever that is, I think early stage or something. Eh, an opportunity comes out, that will be sent to your email address. And it's going to be the email that is registered with your PCS account. So you need to be quite careful that you know who's logging that in case you miss anything. Eh, the email will come through and you'll click on it. And it will bring you through to eh, probably something eh, let me just log in myself here. It'll bring you into a sort of contract notice type. Thing on the screen, let me just see if I can go in here. So it might be something that looks a bit like this. Eh, but it will say quick quote eh, and there'll be a box here that says eh, do you accept the quote? Would you like to quote or would you not? Eh, and you can say, yes, I would like the quote. And that's going to open up these different tabs then of the documents, which is the crucial bit. Eh, the Q and A, which is a little bit like PCS tender one. Eh, and the full text, which will maybe give you details of eh, I don't know, specification links, da, da. But mostly it's going to be the documents you're going to look at eh, Q and A and then decide whether you want to bid or not. Eh, and at that point, everything is, rather than filling it in on a screen, it's all about filling in the documents. That the council have attached to the tender eh, the quick quote application. Eh, you won't need to fill in any of the bit that you've done on PCS tender, insurance, example projects. Manpower, all the different bits that you've filled in, because that's already been done and tested. So at this stage, it's all about how will you do the work? So you're going to get in the documents here quite a lot of questions about eh, meth, what they call method statements. Eh, how will you do this? Eh, here's the outcome eh, I think Keely's got some information, you know, here's a, an outcome, how you're going to deliver it. Eh, and you'll be judged on that and you'll get an evaluation sheet, how that's going to work. Eh, and then what's the total cost, I think is how it's going to eh, go ahead. In the, what they call the call-off contracts that will come through quick quotes. So it's a different system for the quick quote responses. And the way to submit your response eh, once you've read all the documents here, looked at the Q and A. Eh, checked any further information and so on eh, you go to postbox. Eh, the quick quote will come up eh, I'm just looking down, there's one down here, for example, this create one here. So if it's a new one that you've not bid for before, there'll be a little link saying create. So you have to create it first. It comes up with your details here. And at the next point, all you're doing then is uploading the documents. And you'll get the instructions in that set of documentation. Eh, so it's not like PCS tender where you get a question and attach the answer. Here you're going to have you, to have your list of what's needed eh, description and blah, de blah, de blah, whatever you like. Choose your file and here it just takes you to, here's my insurance example eh, again, for example. So just click on that, click open and then add. The system can be a wee bit slow sometime by the way. And this is blank now, but you can see it's added the file, my description created. Eh, and you just literally keep adding in all the files that you need. You can tick it and delete it if it's the wrong one and upload it again. But what you have to be very careful with PCS is not a good system in the sense that if you dispatch it by mistake. Or you dispatch it and at the very last minute, you decide something's wrong. Eh, you have to go back and literally reload absolutely everything from scratch through the system. You can't eh, PCS tender lets, lets you submit and then adapt it a wee bit later. This one you've got to submit, but only press dispatch when you're really, really ready to do that. Eh, if you're not ready to do it, you fill in various bits and pieces and you just save and exit. And then just go back to, just imagine it was this close cleaning one, go back and edit and it will bring you back to your postbox.
Perfect, Jill.
Is that okay? So it's, is that like stage two bit just to cover as well?
That's perfect, thank you so much. So the aim today, guys, was to take away the fear factor so that you knew exactly what your next step was going to be. And I'm absolutely sure you'll all agree that that has now happened. You've got information, you know what's to expect, you know what your next step's going to be. We've looked at the questions, there's nothing in there that you can't answer. You're the expert in your business, those questions are not going to throw you in any way, shape or form. You are going to be able to answer them. And you've got the information from the buyers now so that you know what they're expecting. So fear factor, now go and roll your sleeves up and get started. That's, that's what we aim to do today, so hopefully that's exactly what we've achieved. We do have one or two questions and I do apologise, we have gone over on time, I'm so sorry. But please stay with us if you can to go through the one or two questions that we have in. If you do have a question, there is still plenty of time, I'm keeping my eye on the box. And I've got two experts also with eyes on the box to make sure that we're not going to miss anything. So please eh, please fire questions over. If you've got anything that you want to ask, well, we've still got our experts live in the line. Back in the day, you would not get near a buyer at this stage. And here we have them out from behind their desk, taking time out to spend time with you. To make sure that you know what's the next step for you. So let's dive into the questions, David was asking, thank you for this helpful information. Oh, thank you so much, David, that's really good feedback for the guys. I totally agree with the strengths of the local knowledge and delivery. And wondered if you would welcome collaborative approaches between organisations of different sizes and capacity. We'd like to take that one.
I was going to take that one. Hi David, thank you very much for your question. That's actually a really interesting question because it was something we were discussing just a few days ago. Eh, we do have some work to do with regards to bottoming out what our exact requirements are. But consortia bids are something that we, we'd maybe be willing to accept depending on what the requirement was. On a procurement side, we do have a responsibility to ensure that all of our suppliers have passed the selection criteria. So it might be that we would either, well, we need to get an SPD from, from anyone who was part of it as well. So it could be that we either would want the members of the consortia to potentially be part of the DPS. Or that they would need to submit an SPD to us in some way. So eh, yeah. I'll definitely take that offline and speak up to the guys about that as well. So it could be that there, from a couple of these questions, there might be some wee amendments to the bids. But you would all get a message to inform you of that anyway.
Perfect, thank you. I'm just going to try and see if I can sort this from this, eh, we're still sharing Jill's screen, I'm not sure why. So it's stuck in that look, it's okay, sorted it, thanks, Cisco just puts us stuck in a wee look, we looked there, perfect, thank you, Keira. So Norma was asking, how would organisations go about joining the L E P?
So I'll take that one. Eh, the, the nice simple answer Norma is that you wouldn't join the, the LEP. Its membership is quite specific, but what you could do is look to join the Employability Training Providers Forum in Aberdeen, which feeds up to the LEP. And likewise, the, the LEP feeds down to the. And likewise, the, the LEAP feeds down to the, the forum. Now, there's a member of the forum attends the LEAP. And an ACFO representative also attends. We, as a council, are meantime providing the secretary at for the training providers forum, that's about to shift. Over to ACFO, but if you want to drop an email to. A B Z works at aberdeen city dot gov dot U K. And say that you would like to join the training providers forum, then we can make those connections for you.
I'm sure that's absolutely helped, Norma. Mark was asking. He says, hi, I have an interest in submitting under innovation lot nine. However, looking at the SPD, the lot confirmation document, lot nine doesn't appear as a standalone. It says the tenders bidding for one to eight are automatically entered into lot nine. Do you have any advice on how I can submit for lot nine, please?
I'm going to take that one as well. Thank you for your question, Mark. We don't have lot nine as a standalone lot at the moment, you're correct. So most of the work, at least initially, we've come through those first eight lots. As they're targeted towards our immediate need and the employability pipeline as it stands at present. So lot nine was really about ensuring future proofing for the council. So say if the employability pipeline changed considerably in year three of the contract or year four of the contract. And our requirements didn't quite fit with that lot structure anymore, it would mean that we wouldn't have to do a whole new procurement. We might also find there's something a wee bit different, so we could do the market analysis piece with all of our suppliers via lot nine. And then we might find from that response that it doesn't quite fit with one of the one to eight lots. So we might use lot nine, but the majority of the work we'd come through a lot to one to eight. If we do get a lot of questions about it on PCS two, we might consider changing that. So we'll definitely take that one offline and have a discussion about it between procurement and the employability team.
Perfect, thank you. That's excellent, I'm sure that's helped. Miranda was asking, one of the first slides noted contract start from December. Would we be submitting for question four twenty two, twenty three and then for twenty three, twenty four? Or submissions for cross financial years?
So I'll, I'll take that one. Miranda, where we are just now is that we're launching the. DPS Dynamic Purchasing System. So the dates that you see apply to the system, the mini comps are different. And at this point in time, we only have single year funding. So you could, if we were to run a mini comp, that would be for.